Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Grafton Select Board Meeting.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome to Green Mountain Power. I'd like to call the meeting to order on Monday, April 7th at 6:00 PM in the town hall. We're going to adopt the agenda, but I'd like to do the executive session. And if there's any other additions or direction, when you know it's not somebody that can motion to amend the agenda to approve the agreement.
Question about the executive session. We're talking about personnel.
No, it was initially that I went and stored, I told Morgan to put it on, and then I would say, more than six, because they're never gonna take it off. It was just something I was poking it out and I didn't know.
So I have it. That's the one that I wanted to do. My really, very, 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 very.
Doing today?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a very good session, yeah. Then we'll put it back and then we'll go on to, uh, to, uh, head of the hat. Alright, so that we need a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, what can I make?
Oh, but not what we brought.
All favor say aye. Uh, we have the list of, uh, April 3rd approved. Are there any additions or correct to those minutes as presented? Not the minutes. If not, so we're making a motion to, uh, accept the minutes as presented, uh, April 3rd, so move. All favor say aye, I'll have to vote. Alright, Green Mountain Power, you're ready. Okay. Let's start with it.
Yep. Thanks for having us tonight. Maybe we can introduce ourselves, who's here.
Sure.
So I'm Mike Burke. I lead centrally operations throughout state of Green Mountain Power. My role in these types of events are to make decisions on how many resources are needed in each district based on the damage we get in, things like that. I'll leave it there for now. Come back to me after we introduce to all of them here.
I'm Tiana Smith. And at GMP, my normal goal outside of storms is electric efficiency and sustainability. So I've been down here actually before talking about our Resiliency Project here in Grafton and during storms, my job is to communicate with the towns. And also emergency managers and then we have a team that reaches out proactively to customers on our critical care list, which is folks that are on life-saving medical equipment. So we reach out to them before and during a storm to make sure that they have a kind of base to know what's going on.
You know, David Ward, the operation supervisor for Springfield and Westminster Districts.
That's right, even when the issue, if you can design, kind of, and feel like it was usually covered in town of Grafton around here.
Thank you. So I just read some of the bullets on the handout you gave to, and hopefully the presentation that we did will speak to that a little bit. And then if it doesn't hit exactly what you're hoping to talk about, you know, this is the open conversation. That's why we're here. So, uh, you can hit slide two. So just a bit about GMP, we serve 272,000 customers in Vermont. We have 15 district service centers around Vermont, two of which, one of which currently feeding Grafton, but hopefully in another few months, you'll have two different service centers feeding Grafton. And I'll get to that story a little bit further down the line. About 510 employees, about 300 of those employees are IBW local 300 members, so. Next. The storms that we're seeing, so I actually grew up in Bell's Falls, Saxon River area. I live in South Burlington now, but I grew up down here in the 60s and 70s. And I remember back even just a few years ago, we used to get one or two heavy wet snowstorms a year, and then the rest would be light and fluffy. This year, uh, we had one light and fluffy snowstorm in November, which is not usually when we get them. Usually November is shoulder month, it's warmer and we don't get that. And then every single snowstorm we've had since then has been heavy wet. We know that climate has been changing, uh, but it hasn't been to the extreme that we've seen this year. Snowstorms at 33 degrees are just bad all around. The snow sticks to everything. It's really no different than an ice storm for us. The biggest difference is, is in an ice storm, we can put chains on the trucks and cleats on our feet and we can move around a little bit better. In this last snowstorm where we had over 40 inches in a lot of places, uh, the crews literally were taking, you know, a normal task to put a tag on a pole that would take 15 minutes. They were having the snow show up and it was taking two hours to walk 200 yards into the woods and back out to the, to the trucks again. So, uh, we don't see the weather changing back to where we're gonna start getting light and fluffy again. So that's why we wanna talk a bit about our plans, uh, on how we plan to address that. But again, there's just more moisture in these storms. If you took the snow from this last storm, we work closely with the National Weather Service and we asked them for our quantitative precipitation. If you took the snow and melted it, how much rain would it have been? There was areas in Vermont, on the border, in Jamaica, in Rockingham, some areas had five inches, some areas had four and a half, Rockingham had three and a half inches. So I, I don't think people realize we almost had as much precipitation in this event as Hurricane Irene did, uh, approaching six inches. So it's not normal to get that in a, in a storm, but in this one we did. It, the snow was supposed to stop in southern Vermont about mid-morning Tuesday. It went through until Wednesday afternoon. We'll come back to that. So we do have plans for that. This is remind, so we hadn't had, we have what's called a major storm. If we hit certain criteria of customers out, a certain amount of damage, things like that, it's a, it's, it hits what the, our regulators call a major storm. We actually hadn't had a major storm since 2019. It had been almost four years. We had four since December 16th. So this has been one of the roughest winters we've ever seen. Three of them were heavy wet snow. One of them was an extreme wind event where Burlington International saw that second highest wind speed they've ever seen. And it wasn't a thunderstorm wind. It was just normal gradient sustained wind. So, uh, things have definitely changed. Three out of the four storms were in the top 10 of what we've seen in the last 40 years. We know climate's changing. That's why we have a lot of the programs we have that we'll, we'll talk about. If you can move forward. So we've got a lot of things we're doing. I know Grafton is actually going to host, uh, one of our resiliency zones. Tiana can probably hit that a little more and questions on what we're doing about that. But we also have, uh, what we're calling storm hardening plans all over the state. We're hoping for some community support on that. And, uh, and then in terms of the storms themselves, we have five different forecasters we use, uh, and two National Weather Service, one Albany, which covers this area, one Burlington that covers the rest of the state. And then we have prediction tools as well that tell us how many outages we're going to have, things like that. And that's how we decide how many crews to bring in ahead of time. In this particular, the last event, the March 13th event, we actually almost doubled our workforce, uh, based on the prediction we had. What we ended up getting was, uh, almost six times that amount, but more or less because the storms fall and just didn't move and it kept snowing and snowing and snowing. Next slide, if I could. So, uh, to hit some of what we're doing on the proactive plan, you don't hear this very often, but we wanna vary stuff. We're to the point now where we figured out how to single phase rural areas, which is mostly residential areas like that, that we have the worst trouble in. We're actually gonna make an attempt. There's gonna be some geology we have to deal with, ledge and boulders and things like that where we may have to pop overhead. But in some of our worst, uh, lines that are heavily tree, 80-foot trees everywhere, we are going to try to go underground. We have a lofty goal of trying to do as many as 2,500 miles over the next seven years. And again, trying to do some of the areas that have the most rural, most heavily forested areas there is first. A lot of these lines we're talking about are the lines that go along the houses and our neighbors and feed everyone in the areas we're in. And the answer to that, those distribution type lines is not cutting a 150-foot swath through areas like this. There literally be no trees in the home. And based on the cost of doing that, we could actually vary the lines and probably have a, uh, least, a much more cost-effective answer to that. So that is our plan. That is, for those that can see the screen here, the upper right-hand picture is the new type of underground. It comes on a reel with 2,500 feet that already has conduit wrapped around it. So you're not gluing sticks of conduit together anymore. For every 10 feet, it's a 2,500-foot reel that we plan to either directional bore, open trench, or vibrating plow. A bulldozer can literally put a reel on it and sometimes drive down and just plow it right into the ground and we're done. In areas like this where you've got riverbed and things like that, it's probably gonna end up, we'll be using a couple excavators to do it. The other thing that we're going to do, and I know if you drive back towards Bell's Falls and you see the intersection of 35 and Route 121, I think it's 35, you see what's called spacer cable. It's a brand-new line we just built from that intersection down into the town of Athens. We actually have a project that we are doing that is going to extend from the town of Saxon River all the way to that intersection. And we're planning to run, that's a main line where you can actually tie circuits together, like tie the Chester substation to the Westminster substation. That is much bigger wire, uh, bigger vaults, things like that. We haven't quite gotten to a cost-effective solution to underground that yet. But this spacer cable we're talking about has a, over a half-inch solid steel messenger on the top of the pole. So branches, things like that can lay on it. The power doesn't even go out. You know, if there's a 100-foot tall, 36-inch white pine, sometimes it can even withstand that type of hit. You may have an occasional broken pole, but again, this is quick, easy to put back together. You know, it shouldn't be, shouldn't burn down, shouldn't, it's just a much stronger construction, what we call storm hardening construction. When we do that project, Grafton will go, I think, from about 14 to 15 miles away from the substation to, I believe, about six and a half to seven miles from the substation in Westminster. So we're literally gonna cut the exposure in half to, uh, how many miles of line, how many trees, things like that. That'll be a great improvement in storm hardening that circuit all the way back to Westminster is the plan. At the same time, we're also doing some work on the lines out of Chester that are coming this way. But we feel that that's a much quicker solution to, uh, change the feed into Grafton for the, uh, the type of changing climate we're seeing. And then the other pictures there, just the bottom left-hand corner is actually a NOAA chart that shows the extreme weather that's been happening over the years. I think it starts in 1980 and goes through today. In the last 10 years, we've seen some of the worst weather we've seen since then. And the Northeast in particular, it's seen a 74% increase in extreme precipitation events since 1980. It's the most in anywhere in the United States. You add that to the fact that how heavily forested we are and, uh, you know, that's why we have a climate plan. That's why we wanna do the things we do. And, uh, that's the plan, along with the storage project. So, uh, I'll hit a little on the storage, Tiana, but if you wanna jump in. You know, our power wall plan, they literally, customers that have power walls, they have to, either the app tells them that the line has gone out of power, or they have to look out and see that it's dark beyond their house. This is an instantaneous pickup of your home. Uh, there's no blinks, no nothing. And, you know, if you manage, we've had customers tell us they blasted a full, you know, this last event, we had customers out for almost six days. That's very rare, but if you manage it correctly, you can continue to run your refrigerator, your furnace, everything like that, and blast the whole storm. We've got customers telling us about how they've done that. So that's a great option for people. Right now, there's a cap on the program that only certain amount each year can get it. We're trying to remove that cap. And then we're also doing things like, we have four resiliency zones going around the state that we're in the process of, uh, building right now and Grafton being one of those four. I don't know if you.
Yeah, just, um, I, I've been down here a couple of times and kind of gone to work where there were about 52, um, customers identified as part of that first resiliency zone that would, um, get batteries actually in our homes to provide that backup that Mike was just talking about. Um, of those 52, 23 were interested in participating in the program. Um, I think we have six installed to date, um, and running and, uh, working to install the rest of those 23 that weren't interested in that first part of the resiliency zone. Here in Grafton, there's no cost.
If they're part of that resiliency.
If there, um, other customers that are just on the power wall program, uh, it's $55 a month. And it's a, it's a lease. So that cost is, um, it's a much discounted price from, if you were to just sort of purchase and install it on your own.
$55 covered the installation?
$55, um, is the rental, of the monthly rental.
Yes, so for that, $55 a month. It covers the cost of the initial installation. Yes.
I have a letter from you guys from last year. It was gonna cost $4,000 to put the battery system in my house.
From GMP?
There's also a, uh, Bring Your Own Device program that I wonder if it was that where, uh, other contractors, solar developers, things like that, we give an incentive for them to come in and sometimes they do charge above and beyond what our program offers. So I wonder if it was part of that program. Uh, this is, so the resiliency zone in Grafton is individual home-based. We also have, uh, town-wide utility scale, uh, programs like this. We have one in Panton right now that, uh, has four megawatt-hours of storage combined with solar. And it picks up, uh, pretty much the village of Panton. And so if the grid goes down on either side of that and the grid inside that zone isn't affected, that battery pack will carry the town. And that isn't, so we didn't need to go to individual homes in that case to do it. In a more, that area is also more farm-based. Uh, it's not quite as rural with all the trees and things. That's why here it's a better option to do the individual home base, cause then you're, whether the grid has an issue or not, you're, you're brought back up.
One question. So those other people who are in the zone that did not sign up yet, is it still open?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and what do, what do they do with their agents? They get in touch with?
They get in touch with me. Okay, can we use your contact information? Absolutely.
You can leave with Morgan too.
Yeah.
Anybody who's not here wants, can, can, you know, call Morgan and show people all the contacts.
Yeah. If you're able to be described, what that so is?
Do you have a degree? I do. I can. Yes, we have a tweet back. So if you haven't heard from me, and we have done emails, letters, I'll, I'll, if you haven't heard from me, likely you're not in, in the zone. But it doesn't mean that you won't be part of the future zone. This is just sort of a first tranche of customers here in Grafton. But I'm, I'm happy to show you that I have been at it, so I can, I can show it to you.
Anybody question more about Grafton or Green Mountain Power? Or you want to?
We've got some more things to talk about and we'll get into how things worked in this past storm, what we saw, things that we're working on. So, uh, this is just a list of projects that we currently have in the plans already that'll help improve the reliability of this area. So, uh, the Westminster feed coming through Saxon River into Grafton is the big one. Uh, again, just cutting the exposure right in half from the distance from the substation to Grafton. We also have, uh, lines, if you've ever driven route from Chester Route 11 out to Andor, Londonary, you've probably seen, we've been doing the same thing there. And what that is doing is we're creating bigger backbones between the substations so that if we have a transmission issue, we can actually carry subs off another substation that's close to it. So that one in particular is, we're tying the Chester substation to the Londonary substation. Both of those have single transmission feeds. So, uh, we're trying to tie, we are tying the distribution together to make it as if it has a repetitive feed to the substation, but through the distribution instead of the high, high voltage transmission lines. Londonary to Weston, that also creates a second feed to the Chester substation. And then, uh, right now, the, and we'll get into this a little bit on what we saw to the storm, but the, uh, Chester transmission line, the transmission line that comes in to feed the Chester substation, we put that on and lost it three times during this last event, which was a lot of the outage time in the first two days. And that right-of-way is absolutely flat cut all the way out to the edge of the right-of-way. And what we're looking at there is, in some places, vegetation does make sense to do more. And on our transmission, which is the high voltage lines that go between substations, we are in the process of trying to get landowners to allow us to take a further width on those. Again, those are the ones you may be driving up the interstate and see a big wide swath, uh, through the woods. Those are our transmission right-of-ways. There's usually not homes there. So it makes sense to just widen it so that trees can't get to it. Where it's much harder to do that when the lines are just along in front of your house and people want trees. And then the resiliency zone in Grafton, I already did. So the conversation we have on how we wanna continue to partner with communities and even expand on that, I wanna hit a little bit on that to start. And then hopefully we can address some of the questions you have in the, in the handout here is, so when we see a big storm coming where all the forecasters are saying it's gonna be bad, so for instance, the high wind event on the 23rd, three or four days ahead of that, we knew we were gonna get 60, 70 mile an hour winds. Vermont trees don't react very well to 60, 70 mile an hour winds, especially coming out of the southeast and east. It's not a normal wind direction for our tree canopy. And we did, in that storm, we did extensive outreach, uh, to all of emergency planners. We reached out to our critical care list of customers, which we'll explain what that means and meant. And then, uh, also to anybody with a power wall and how to make sure they're using it correctly to make it extend as long as they could. And with this event where Sunday night, when we were finishing up prep before the storm, it was 12, 18 inches and then just kept getting higher and higher and we ended up with almost 48 inches. So, you know, this storm ended up being worse than the forecast predicted and then we predicted, uh, which is why we didn't do such extensive outreach. And, you know, we're finding that happens on occasion now where the, I think the models and the atmospheric conditions have changed so much that they're not always getting things right. The, uh, just last Friday and last Monday, we actually, in fact, I know I passed a treaty that was down on Route 121 that was part of that wind event. We were getting predictions for 40 to 45 miles an hour at the summits. We got 50 miles an hour all the way down into the Connecticut River and we had some tree damage in that last storm. I think it was last Tuesday. And, you know, again, just there was no wind advisory, not even a special weather statement. So just things are happening now when they're not supposed to. So that, again, why we're changing and trying to do more and more and more on resiliency, because we don't see the weather going back to how it used to be. The, the critical care list, maybe I'll hit first, Tiana, and you can, so if you have a medical device at home that, uh, you count on to make sure your health stays where it needs to be, we actually have a system where a customer can call in, let us know that, and we put them on, let's call the critical care list. It's not just a list that you can get on by just saying, hey, I wanna help get my power back quicker, because that's actually not what the critical care list is for. What the critical care list is for and why we keep that list of things is we make phone calls, uh, based on, we can push a button anytime during a large event and it'll tell us which critical care customers are out of power. We have a team that actually makes outgoing phone calls to all of those customers in a large event where we know we're facing, uh, a multi-day restoration event to talk to them, to help, help them make decisions on what best is for them for making sure they keep themselves safe. So, you know, if we talk to them and it's still in the first 36 hours of storm, when it hasn't stopped snowing and trees are still coming down, and they tell us, well, I only have 12 hours of battery left, we'll tell them, for their, whatever their medical device might be, whether it's oxygen or something like that, we'll actually tell them, you know, you need to make alternative plans. How can we help you do that? You know, whether it's calling a friend, a family member, we've actually, Tiana's team has actually turned around and called local emergency planners to try to get them to go out and help these customers. So, uh, the way that the grid works, we actually can't say we're gonna go restore, uh, Route 121 in Grafton if the transmission, the main line, everything is out behind that, right? So there's, there's a certain way that we have to restore just to get the power on to everybody. And so that's not what that list is for, but that list is for us to help customers make their decision on what's best for them during these events. Did, did I hit it all?
That's great.
Okay. Tiana's team also, uh, has started, and I, I assume some of you in here maybe are on that list, but she also has started communications with local emergency planners, town leaders, things like that, to be able to give information on how the restoration's going and also it works as a, a feedback both ways, uh, in these events, which I know is on here and we'll, we'll talk about that, but that's also something that that team does. And then obviously we have a team of 30, uh, call center reps, which can expand, you know, upwards of 60 to 70 in these big events to make sure we're answering the phones. In these larger events where literally we continue to take damage for the first two days, we have the best intentions of getting as much information as we can out to customers, but a lot of what was happening, and Dave can speak to this, it probably happened four or five times, where we're going to one thing based on a, a call from a fire department or just a, another issue we're trying to get to quick and the next thing you know, we have another failure blocking Route 103 that we have to turn around, pull off and go to that. We, uh, you know, Springfield, Grafton, Westminster, the area that we knew was gonna get the most amount of snow. We had doubled the workforces in all those districts before this event. And literally, almost every crew was just chasing those types of things for almost the first two days. If it was a main line out of the sub that happened to be down that we were, we were going to address, we did restore that because those types of lines carry 2,000 customers on occasion. So the first two days, we actually restored 25,000 customers while at the same time we lost 25,000 customers. So the number looked level, but in reality, we were putting a lot of people back on during, during that event. Is it, yeah, so this, you can go forward. This is just, I already talked a little bit about the storm planning. We have systems. We have, uh, forecasters that do forecasting just for the state of Vermont utilities. We have forecasters that do outage prediction for us. And, uh, we base all of our planning off those and then we also double check with the National Weather Services too. And, uh, sometimes they get it right, sometimes, uh, that, I don't know if you looked at the warnings for this storm, but originally it was Bennington and Wyndham County. And by day two, about noon, they extended it all the way to, uh, the Canadian border. So where we didn't expect trouble north of pretty much Rutland Windsor County, we ended up with trouble all the way to the, uh, northern end of the state, which held some troops in place before we could send them south. And, uh, so just the forecasts are important, but we also, we know that they've been a little tougher to get it right lately. And again, I think it's just that the models are based on the last 50 years of weather. And I think things are changing quicker than the models are keeping up with them. Uh, just a little bit on that storm. So by the end of the storm, we had quadrupled our workforce. We were feeding and working upwards of, if you count on our internal people, over a thousand people in the field working on this restoration. And these were either, uh, rated line crews, tree crews, electricians, uh, from all over the Northeast United States and Quebec. the northeast United States and Quebec. Uh Kentucky, uh I'm thinking of the province to the uh west of Ontario, Ontario, Quebec, Brunswick. And then pretty much from Kentucky north, we're not only in Vermont, helping Vermont, but New York, New Hampshire and Maine actually, believe it or not, had a lot more customers out than we do. Uh we get up to about forty thousand at peak. New Hampshire was at like a hundred and ten thousand, Maine was almost two hundred thousand. Uh so it was a pretty widespread event. It wasn't just Vermont. What Vermont did have the most of in the end was snow. Uh we ended up being ground zero. The way that the eastern winds hit against the Vermont ridgeline, it stacks the snow up and it just keeps falling. And pretty much from the Massachusetts border up through almost into Orange County is where we saw the most. That's where I talked about the five inches of uh of snow. It was just on the eastern part, mid uh elevation of the Vermont ridgeline. Uh tha- that's the uh mutual aid group we have. You can see in the center picture, it covers all the northeast, including three or four provinces in Canada. Uh next slide. And then this, this slide just shows the power restoration process. And what it shows is that the towers that you see in the top of the page, those are the transmission lines that come into the substations. We have to get those on first if they happen to go out uh because we can't, anything we fix on the distribution lines, which are what you see go out to the homes and businesses and hospitals and things like that. If that transmission is not on, we can work on the other stuff all day long and it's not going to restore any customers. So we have to do the, o- oftentimes we'll get questions from customers, I don't see any trucks, I don't, why aren't you working? Why aren't, and the answer is, we have trouble even on the big lines and we've got to fix those and then work our way out from the substations. And that's exactly what we were doing. Uh in terms of hazards and things like that, we do try to hit all of those at the same time. And we did have a lot in the storm that uh I see you had some questions on that in here that we can talk, speak to a little bit too. Uh but that is, so with the critical care customer list, that's why we can't say to that customer, yes, we'll come right out and get you back on because we literally have to restore each step of the way to even get out to those customers. So that list is again for us to help communicate what will be the best decision for those customers.
Yeah, uh yeah, let's just clarify something that came up that we, we had recently meeting with our representative in the chase. And at that meeting, it was said that if you uh, what do you call it, critical care person or household, GMP will make an effort to restore your power. That's actually not correct. So that's a misunderstanding. And I, and I hear you saying that
Yeah.
we, we let you know that we need oxygen or whatever in our household, but that doesn't mean that you're going to come and restore us.
Right.
Yeah, right?
Right.
Yeah, so there was a misunderstanding about that.
Yeah, and we can follow up. We've actually met with a lot of the state representatives and senators down here. And we actually had that conversation, but, but yes, we're happy to follow up. And, and just, that's why we wanted to show this slide because once everyone understands how the grid works, i- it's just not even physically possible to go to one home and do that.
Yeah, but even so, um so most of us were not aware about the existence of the critical careless. And someone who has lived in my household with someone who was dependent on oxygen would have been great to know. It's, I know it's on your website under safety tips when you look for it, but it's not exactly easy to find. And I'm wondering, since you communicate with us every month and follow the bill, perhaps how many times a year you could put a little notice, keep in mind, if you need to be in our critical careless, call this number.
Absolutely.
Would that be possible?
Um.
So yeah, no, I'm.
Yeah, okay. Yes, absolutely. We can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh if you, yeah, next slide. That, that's just going uh that we, we went to uh Wardsborough and had a conversation there and the damage into Wardsborough, that's where I was talking, we had forty six inches of, I don't know how much we had here, I'm sure it was close to that. Uh but some of the customers there were telling us that, you know, on day two of the event, they still thought it was isolated to just the Wardsborough area. And they finally were able to watch the news and saw that it was Bennington County, Wyndham County, Windsor County, uh Orange County, and then New Hampshire, Maine, New York. Uh this ended up a pretty widespread event. Uh you, I took this early in the morning of uh Tuesday. And you could see it hadn't peaked out yet. Uh we didn't even make the top five, but you can see New Hampshire was at seventy thousand. Maine right behind him at sixty. And unfortunately, it continued to decline for another day and a half after that. Uh the, the thing just stalled. There was a high pressure system to our northeast over Canada and it just locked the system in and it didn't move. Uh and then the last slide is uh we know this was tough on everybody. We know it was tough on our customers. We know it was tough on the local emergency responders. It was tough on our team. Uh and it was, once we'd see people like this on the side of the road, our crews would come up on this and they took the pictures. So uh that was nice to see. Uh but again, we understand how tough this was on everybody. Uh this was a different type of storm with the amount of precip and the fact that it just stayed thirty three degrees. But we have plans to do what I'm talking about because it seems nine out of ten storms this year were this type of storm. Luckily, a lot of those storms, there was only an inch of cold breeze that, right? And not four to five. Uh but if this is our future, that is why we're putting such an urgency to this uh to get this line fed from a different way, just to cut the, the uh the exposure down by half the mileage. So uh to speak a little bit on the hazards and things like that, which I know are in here. So we have a system that shows us where the hazards are. Uh it tells us what kind of hazards it is, whether it's a down wire or whether it's uh blocking roads, things like that. Uh in this storm, there was just a lot of them. And we were doing everything we could to triage, Dave and his team locally, to triage to try to get to every area we needed to. I know in some cases, there was reports of lines down, energized. Uh we actually know when the circuits are on or off, in some cases, not all the cases. Uh but we do have the triage in an event like that where it's so widespread to where we can get to first. Uh we have this new connection set up with Tiana and her team. And we've also been trying to make sure that the local road managers are connected with the Springfield team to have that open communication too. I know Dave was talking about whether he had them for the Grafton area. And you know, that's not a, a phone call to call in outages and things like that. But if uh, you know, if something just happens and the road manager has a contact with Dave, we can try to make sure we're prioritizing everything as quickly as we can. Uh so we also are talking about how we can actually even divide our crews up even more to be able to respond to more of those things quicker. So uh again, this event was different. Not every event is like this. This is like I said, the three out of these four forms were the, in the top ten in the history over the last forty years. So uh you, you know, even so, we're trying to think about, okay, if this is the future, how do we get better and better and better with every storm at getting to everywhere we need to be as soon as we can? Not so much to restore the power, but at least to make save, keep the roads open, things like that. Uh
Can I ask a question now?
Yeah.
Adam. Um I, I think I'm summarizing what our local feeling is uh fairly well. Our biggest problem, uh multi-day event uh is lack of, of local communication with the organization. That's true. But the situation, that's like Wardsborough, we didn't have any worldview. But more importantly, what's happening within, within our town, being able to communicate that in your network without going out and counting on trucks that are running around, maybe from Kentucky that uh basically don't know, we want to be able to communicate with uh basically the crew bosses working this area.
Hmm.
Um in some kind of patented fashion so that our local emergency management can communicate with our residents so that they can have a certainty of, or at least uh a measure of certainty of what the situation is.
Hmm.
If they're going to be without power for two hours, day, a week.
Hmm.
That all of their decisions are based on uh what you see as the um interpretation for you. You have a picture of the, your road crews have a local picture that's pretty good. But we here don't have a big picture.
Hmm.
And I'm, I'm suggesting that we need some means of communicating with a local community. But that, that's not just our, our road groups and our emergency folks know where their lines down, uh know where we, we've got to run a soap call through. We can't because of wires in the road.
Hmm.
Uh if we had some way of uh on a periodic basis, informing our um uh emergency management, which uh in normal times, that's going to be perhaps a town administrator. But if it's several days, we may pull them up with emergency operations center. So our E M Ds and we're, we're going to get pulled up to be um a pub for communication within our community. And we need to be able to draw information in and give it back to you guys. And I think it's, it's going to be there. We can help you and you can help us. And the more we can put our residents at comfort of knowing how big this problem is going to be, I'm not going to have to go out of state to find a motel room or kind of weather this, you know, tomorrow, uh that kind of city. Uh it is really um quite important.
Yeah, so I can start, Tiana, and uh so we actually want to create those local connections. But if we, if we overload the local connections that actually dispatching and then that's not a good answer either. But what we have built, and I assume you were probably sending the updates, right?
I wasn't, yeah, I mean, I was on the phone with Kim Racker probably no less than a dozen times over those few days. And I spoke to Morgan, I spoke to your road foreman multiple times today. My cell phone called me in the middle of the night to tell me about downed wires and
So what, what we have is, so Tiana and her team, we actually create what's called a high level assessment. And because of the reasons I explained, how we're headed to one and we have to pull off and go to another, it's hard to give in the early days uh estimate of when each particular section of line is on. But what we do is usually, and we have to stop taking outages before we can make this estimate. We have systems that tell us exactly how many crews we have, how many outages we have, and when the last customer in that area will come back on. And uh Tiana, Candace, uh some others on that team will send usually twice a day, once we get to that point, to a local emergency planning email. And if we don't have enough people on there, that's certainly something we can do. And that also works as a, a back and forth with the issues like you talk about. Once, you know, in a smaller storm, the uh local connections work well. But in a storm like that where we actually have three thousand separate events to respond to, we try to keep the local areas concentrating on, we had what, eighty crews working out of this one district? And we had, I think we had three or four dispatchers, so we spread it out as much as we can. But for them to be taking all those calls is tougher. So that's where Tiana's team comes in and did I hit everything?
Yeah, we have um Eric Stevens, Bill Kearns and Robert Spray and Morgan Wilber on our contact list. Those are those great people that have. Mike, you had my phone number, because I have.
Sure do.
Yeah.
Write myself. Probably right early.
Yeah.
Yeah, but and that is really to give what we give in those early stages of a storm is the high level district restoration plan. So if the system's telling us uh Friday or Saturday, we'll tell you that on Tuesday so you know what we're facing.
It was really helpful though to hear from Ken and to know this is exactly where this wire is down. It's exactly what we're seeing on the roads here in town. Because then I'm from the storm center able to tell Mike and others that are reading it. And you know, usually you already have it, this is in the system that I have, we stated that there's these wires now. I think i- if it wasn't immediately during the presentation, the, the damage was so widespread that those incidents were happening literally all over southern Vermont. With the first two days just clearing roads like that, literally in town, all, all over southern Vermont. So um just different.
But I, sorry.
Was there a way to let the town crew and the fire department and him rescue? And they were, why is, we knew wires were down, we didn't know if they were dead or alive. Is there a way to let us know? Because we, we are at San Diego.
So here's the thing, uh all lines until a line crew has been there, tested and grounded the line, whether they're alive or not, you have to treat, and that's actually an ocean rule. So you can't so we can't, in, in other words, we knew when the substation was out or not, but that doesn't allow us to tell you, yeah, that, because what happens is people that connect generators wrongs and things like that, it can actually back feed to the transformer, back on the line. So uh you know, really what we're trying to do is in, in, in a widespread storm like that, we're trying to triage how we can put even more people the splitting up crews, things like that, to how we can get to these in a more expedited time. But we know when the substations are out, absolutely. We have smart meters. Uh but we can't tell you that's okay for you to go. Uh that's the last thing we, we want you to do, so.
Well, one thing I'll just add is that because these storms are so different, we are, and part of what we're doing here is we want to be even, we want to be better at communication. So whether that means in the future, we actually dispatch someone like me or on my team to actually sit here at the town hall and feed information, we're talking through all kinds of strategies right now to be able to get you that real time information um that's happening as it's happening. Um and uh you know, making sure that when we're providing estimated times for restoration, that we're using language that actually shows what we're doing, right? Clearing roads, um clearing hazards, making things safe so that people know what to expect. Um this was, the, you know, a- as I said, the storm was supposed to sort of move north and stay in place for two days, dumping snow, you know, forty, forty eight inches um in, in some spots. And so um we want to in the future be able to communicate that exact thing, very real times that people know what to expect.
You know, even the high wind event that we had at Christmas, uh we had a lot of damage then, but we could move, right? There wasn't three to four feet of snow. What was different in this one is even when we knew where they were, our crews, just like your crews, were, were battling just to get to these areas and, and uh that was what was different. I mean, we have pictures of fire trucks that people were sending us that were off the road, uh that had slid off the road in areas. And we, we know how tough it was, that we're not saying that was why it happened. We know we ha- actually have to prepare to be able to respond even in that extreme event and we're working on that. Uh but it was, it was different. I don't know, Dave, i- in terms of local contacts, you know, on the day-to-day basis, that's great, right? Uh and these really, really large events, uh when we've got three hundred extra crews working, that gets a little tougher, but I, you know, what are your thoughts on the local connection?
Yeah, to your point, I see, you know, adding there, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a board. Two, I gave them my phone number and they, they got to be definitely on a day-to-day, the two point one uh to, to this, this path event, it would have been a bit overwhelming, taking so many phone calls. Um in addition to the line crew, I want to figure for, for next stop kind of situations, so.
Yeah, and that's why we have that centralized team of us, uh because we can triage those calls and we don't have thirty trucks calling, looking for the next order, things like that. So hopefully we can get better and better and better at the communication we're putting out to help all the towns, help all our customers. And, and that is what our plan is. And then, you know, I've held many positions at Fremont Power, including operation supervisor, dispatching trucks. So I've got enough where I can help and help triage too. Uh and literally that's what we do to all fifteen districts. We get that information as needed to get it down to them and hopefully they can get to those areas. You know, we watch for sewer departments that need We watch for sewer departments that need to get back on, can we help, or is the transmission line out? We we triage things like that all during these storms. I don't know if all that answers some, yeah.
That makes me feel a lot better. We do need to, I think, prioritize it perhaps through uh Morgan's office down here. So that uh we we have a coordinated um feed in both directions. We've been lucky so far, I mean, we were very lucky in our reading, but your telephone. Uh our telephone is uh mostly underground coming out of Crafton. And it's saved up there later, it's saved up there in the storm. And they don't like to do that, but it's still possible, and you will our head telephone. Uh we in Crafton are at least beginning to be prepared to operate with um ham radio operators. Is your group um preparing to be able to uh communicate the same kind of information? Probably through the larger um emergency operations center to do the same kind of thing. We have much more throughput, but at least we get a situational awareness.
So in these larger events, we actually, I don't know if we'll be able to do what Tiana said, which is station somebody in every town. But we actually do station somebody right in the E O C at Vermont Emergency Management. And uh so yes, we do have a direct connection right from there to the operations people that are running, helping run the event. Uh as an example of that, so we've actually made a lot of calls if those critical care customers were calling. If we hear something that distresses us a little bit, which we did quite a bit in this past storm. Whereas maybe a customer had a propane heater in the house or something like that, that we actually had a direct connection. To either a local emergency planner or through Vermont Emergency Management, and they worked with us to send a local. Assistant fire chief out with a C O two detector, things like that, uh so those are happening all the time during these events. That's a long way to answer, yes, we do have connection straight to Vermont Emergency Management and and we use them, so.
Think that was really good presentation, answered most of my questions. There are a few things that that are in here, and I won't go through what what I handed out to you. But in the first phase, there's some frustration dealing person to person that maybe you guys can work out, and maybe that's just the way it's gonna be. Because I understand that the crews often don't understand exactly more than what they're ju- what they're sent to do. And and they don't know where they're going next or anything else, but if there's any of that communication that can get back to them. Most important part of the communication is that it be effective, and that's what you'll see a complaint here where the highway crew went out. Were told, I don't know what it's called, went there to the lines and they're still activated, it's just a few things like that, mistakes happen.
And they were told that by the line crew, you're saying?
And when they got there, the line, they were told that, yes, they were told by the car company it was off, and and when they got there, it was on. It was supposed to have been shut off, but out there on led roof. You talked about it the other day, I didn't know exactly that. In in any case, that that is just that communication. The one thing in the in our work, I did put in here at the very end. Where the people on Chesapeake Hill that lived in the first. Couple hundred yards of Chesapeake Hill right here off the road are often losing their power per day. Because the breaker that serves that whole line all the way up to the Chesapeake boundary. As I understand it, it's on that pole, if we could get another breaker on that pole. A lot less people would lose power when a tree passes in the forest that kind of is grow, if that could be done.
So I had a fuse, Greg, you know what I was talking about, yeah, okay. We can absolutely look into it, and it would really save them because.
There aren't any trees around the house, the problem's out there.
Yeah. And and again, in terms of people telling, so sometimes we have damage come in. Uh after, say a main line is out, right, and. After that main line goes out, another tree comes down a day later and hits another section. That didn't register before the main line went out, occasionally, things like that do happen where we re-energize the main line. And don't know that something else happened in the meantime, uh those things do happen, we know, we find out about them pretty quickly. Uh after, but unless somebody has been there and tested and grounded the line. I'm not sure who was telling you that this line is absolutely de-energized, because that's not something that we do, so.
Yeah, there's some good, there's some good papers from the, but I actually appreciate it. To that, there's some communication from the crews that, I mean, they can talk to all the crews about how to communicate with 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 your. With your road crews, and then there's a this uh this right orchard road, it's definitely something you can look at and work there. I appreciate that, but it's not something we always see from behind the desk, so that local information, appreciate it.
Yeah, and we do have heat maps of where the most outages are and, you know. Take this storm out because it was so extreme, but we have data that we, they're heat maps. And we're going after the areas first that, uh you know, the lines may be perfectly fine, the wire may be perfectly fine. But it's not storm art, and with today's weather and the the amount of old rope trees and things like that, it's just uh. We're gonna change how we feed those areas, and hopefully it's going under the ground. Uh you know, any help we can get when we start to try to do that in areas, we'll take. Uh believe it or not, we've had some pushback of people not wanting the lines to go underground, uh so. You know, thank you for having us, any help you can give us if we try to push this out there would be wonderful, and we're always open to feedback, so thank you.
Well, it's really good, nice to hear that you're putting up um spacer cable holders, line through the center. Are you gonna upgrade the line and test it? The other question is, will you uh at some point extend the three phase line in Athens south to. Probably a length of about three, maybe four miles. Um three phases, three phase, they should connect up and then you can get all of that.
So that one is not on the books, the the distance there is even further than what we're talking about with Westminster, Westminster is a lot closer. Uh I think it's literally six and a half miles versus thirteen or fourteen, I gotta measure it on our maps again, but it it was cutting it in half when I. Measured it the other day, uh the line from Chester to Crafton, we're in the phasing of how to do that. So yes, that project, I'd like to see a lot of that underground where we can, overhead where we can't. Uh but the new tie to Westminster is gonna be, I, we still have customers on that line, the new tie to Westminster. It's all roadside, all state highway, all paved, it it's a, that's a really good upgrade. I give credit to Dave and his team down here that uh are getting that done, so hopefully. I don't believe we need any state permits or anything, we just gotta get the final approval from a few landowners and get the design done. And we can literally start building it, so.
I just have a comment, those three lines going into Athens, definitely made an improvement for Athens.
Yeah. And when that.
Then it's just laying on top of them, and we were still having to be approved.
And it stays on, yeah.
Well, there was other parts that knocked out, but.
Yeah, behind it, so this this new spacer cable, that it's not new, we've been doing. It for a while, but more and more every day, like all of our main lines are what we wanna do that, we wanna build it with that, and. We've had areas in Sharon, Vermont, for instance, or the line goes from Sharon to Straffer, it's thirteen miles long. And at the end of the storm, we sent a crew out there, there was eleven trees on it, the customers never knew. We removed the trees, they stayed on, uh that's how, again. Solid steel at the top of the ball that doesn't care what's on it, as long as it's not so big that, right, uh.
I mean, it was like seven holes, and every intersection that had a tree on it, the whole section, it was a tree.
That's why we wanna put that everywhere we can, so.
Whenever some question, I mean, you have a meeting to go.
Sorry.
But with what my people have had in the show.
Yeah.
I really appreciate it, thank you, you know, I think it's great. Anything in town that you would help you with, um that is our under control, we're we're here to help.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, and thank you for having us, and uh like I said, I know that was tough. And hopefully we don't see a ton of those, but we're gonna be prepared if we do. Okay? We're gonna, yeah.
It's the only, it's the only business that you can be wrong in, still get, still keep it in.
I still think, you know, the models just aren't keeping up with the changes, so. Thank you.
Okay, you have the N R C X discussion.
Could all what you guys are thinking, then I, then I.
Well, and and at the last meeting, it was, it was taken, it was not taken, but we just put it on the agenda. There was a, there was a discussion and the uh there was a, I can't say unanimous opinion, but it was an opinion that said that. Um the particular sick dog that changed or whatever, uh shouldn't be paid by the land. Now, that's where the discussion started, and that's where it's got there. Prior to nineteen ninety six, the so the water that came off the mountain was divided by a road. Everything south going uphill from Fire Pond. And and then the road that is now the driveway, the bottom south. Everything that side of it went down Fire Pond. Except for a very small part that came out of the pond. Everything north of it is sealed, and and as you come up the road, there is drainage going down to Hinkley Brook. When Pyron Pond did the, did the repair to that. They took everything uh north of the road and everything coming down that and and send it all. Uh and pardon, everything that was north, but they sent it down Fire Pond road. To the extent that it didn't go into the pond, if it went in the pond. So most of it, all that area on the hill above Rob's house, went into the pond and went down. Past Andrea's house, the house just down the street from me, and into the creek and into Hinkley Brook. So you took that drainage that used to be divided between what was going into Hinkley Brook. Up the river and what was going into, going down Fire Pond Road, and you combined it all and sent it all into Hinkley Brook. Or down Fire Pond Road and into Hinkley Brook instead of going past yet to the church. In that culvert, under the road and into the river. So what you did, you increased the flow that goes between Dottie and Pat's house by exponentially, who knows how many gallons. Because all that water coming out that whole hill now goes past their two houses. Instead of bypassing all of it, and uh so. What you did is you had a storm stormwater thing, but you didn't follow any of the state laws, which you barred to the storm. For instance, you increased the water going through that swale that goes through Patrick's yard. By exponentially, when you put the dissipator in, you put a bigger pipe to bring the water across the road. But you didn't have a hearing. To increase your easement right away by burden, as you're increasing the burden, you had no hearing. So you didn't have a discussion about how much water is gonna be used there, how big that that swell should be, which you didn't change. How much water was gonna be added to the water going past their houses instead of going down, you can apply through the middle of town. And at that hearing, you should have discussed what you were gonna pay the two of them. But especially Patrick, because it's on his property for the right to increase the easement on his property. You didn't have that discussion, it's right in the law, Title nineteen, nine hundred and one and following, it's right in there. Yeah, but can I judicial, what you said judicial, judicial public hearing to determine whether this is a good idea? Whether we need to do this, is what we're doing sufficient? And what do we pay the landlord because we're using his land to drain our storm? You didn't have any of that, so because of that, what you have in that, in that small area that. In the small distance, a couple hundred feet of Hinkley Brook, you have a stormwater system. Between those two walls that you created that is insufficient to carry the water. And you have a swale that is failing at the end, it's collapsing into the creek. Which you, that you have to fix according to the same Title nineteen, nine hundred and following, you have to fix that. And uh to then, you didn't offer any money for the use of his property. But now you want him to pay for all the damage that is caused by the more water going down there than ever had before. Because of the way you designed the 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 water coming off the hill. So I think that at the very least, you should take that whole. Um match, you pay that whole match. And in addition to that, you need to fix where the, at the end of the swale where it's collapsing in the river. And uh I don't know, Morgan gave you the maps of. That you gave me, if you notice at the end of that swale. How it narrows, how the how the creek narrows, because the swell sticks out. And that all needs to be cut back to widen, to widen it. What's gonna happen with the first fifty feet is where the bridge tree is and that's gone, and you see the the what's poking out there? That gets down to seven feet from about twelve all along there. And that's what causes the, caused the problem where he did there, it's the same thing up by the swale, you narrowed the the creek all of a sudden. The uh width of the uh of the uh river at the at the at the culvert. Is twelve feet, it's a culvert culvert, it's twelve feet for a little ways back, and then it gets down to seven. And then it's about ten or eleven feet all the way back up, and then above Dottie Candice, it's again twelve feet. And the whole thing should should be that, but um fixing that first fifty five feet is gonna help. But if you don't take care of the swale and and fix it, when it collapses, all the rest of that stone wall on his property is gonna go. Hopefully, when Iber fixes this thing, if if you guys. Agree to that he could, he should, and you hopefully pay the the matching fund. He should try that back in, where he ends, he should go back in a bit. So that when this fails and the rest could all goes down the creek, it doesn't take that newly out. So the town, it, we were asked before, uh at one time, why are we working on private property? You're working on private property because you made that property, you made that stormwater thing that is on private property. First of all, the first part of it is yours, that's on your easement, you have to fix that. And by adding all this water to the, to the creek at that point. Way more than it, we're ever going down there before when Fire Pond mostly drained straight down. Uh you created the stormwater system in their backyard that is on private property, and it's inadequate to carry the flow. That you increased it to, had you had that hearing, had S D E Engineering been able to go to that hearing. And present what they had, this, what they thought of Pyron Pond, maybe the town wouldn't have done what they did. And maybe they would have sent the water further down or through the town and into the river instead of putting it where they did. But they moved wa- moved an amount of water around and uh and it's causing a problem in that area. But they moved wa moved amount of water around and uh, and it it's causing a problem together. So I think I think town should. Pick up the whole match. At least on this and. Fix the end of that swell before it collapses. In a minute. The other part has to be repaired too.
Phil, what about Patrick was engineered wrong and recommended something wrong? Should that be fixed before you fix what flooded out?
Yeah, yeah.
I I can't see any reason for fixing what is flooded out there when it's gonna happen again if you say what was engineered was wrong.
Well, if you're are you gonna do it now? Because he luckily. Survived the winter and we didn't have a flood.
Right.
Okay, but if he can't survive very much longer, really.
It's a problem, Bill. You're still gonna have it again.
You are. So when so when are you gonna do that?
Well, I think John's right. And whether or not the town pays. The whole the whole uh. Amount to fix uh. Patrick's area there and and do this. If you don't fix the up above. Then next summer or the summer before and after that, we have another major. Rainstorm and it does then we'll fix the thing again with a fifteen time. So I think I think the question is, I I think you should fix this whole thing personally. Okay, I agree with you there. But I think we have to fix the upper portion. Because that's why I'm saying, well, they don't, I have a car. But you know, I don't wanna change the tires. But I might not make it. I mean, if you don't change the tires, you're not gonna make it for your trip. If you don't fix this, you're almost assuring yourself. That maybe not tomorrow, maybe not next year, you will have the same problem all over again.
But if you're saying you don't wanna fix the first fifty-five feet.
No, no, I don't say that actually.
But if if you do not fix the first fifty-five feet.
I'm saying we should fix that.
And the storm comes with that much water down there. That whole area is gonna be broken all the way to the culvert because it hits down to seven. Part of what you're fixing is right now seven feet wide.
What I'm saying is we need to fix this. But we also need to figure out and fix the problem above.
You do.
And if you don't fix that and we fix this, what's gonna happen is we're gonna have another meeting, maybe another what select or whatever, I'm gonna face the same situation again. And if you if you listen to our friends from Green Mountain Cow. And you talk about the changing weather forecast. Who knows what's gonna happen? You don't know how much rain we're gonna have this summer or the or the or or the subsequent summers. And if you have a a heavy rainstorm. And. You don't change the pattern of the water coming from Fire Pond and down there, then this is gonna be affected once again.
Exactly. So.
That's like that.
Okay, so you should you need to fix, but Patrick had hired an engineer to redesign what's coming off the hill. You have to do that.
I I I agree with that. How long has it been now?
Two thousand and.
Four, three.
Or two thousand.
And the dissipators weren't installed.
Two thousand thirty-five.
That's when they switched it to all the two in between Patrick and I.
And so you know too that that this repair of the walls, not the first repair. This is repaired out of a how about two or three times already?
Recovered in ninety-six and then again in two thousand and four.
Right.
And and your logic then. Been a did some of our in ninety-six.
Right, and then Dottie, Dottie and they come and they've been just doing it so far, correct?
I've done it four times since I did it.
So this is this is not something that you just had a certain switch the flow, how many times do we have to repair?
Say again?
Since she did switch it, so everything runs down between the album.
I did.
How many times do we have to repair?
It would have been, it would have been two thousand and three or four and would have been like two thousand and eleven.
And that's right.
And then this last storm we had last summer. Is that correct? It was three times.
Twice. And then this time where nobody cares. That's been there my side. Whereas I didn't get enough. So three times in twenty-four years.
Phil, you have an estimate on if we have to hire an engineer and do what has to be done so the waters are burdened? Do you have an idea?
Uh, depends on where you're gonna put it in the river. Uh, I don't know what you're talking about cost. But what comes off the fire ponds and and the in the village park and all that other stuff, what comes off that now should go straight down. Straight down the road. They got the road put in a put in a a culvert all the way down the road and some goes somewhere into the river either after the town, go all the way down Main Street and.
We're losing that one.
You know, and and. Someday you're gonna have to do that. Because we have all those these drainages out here. I don't know. I don't know. They're they're limited in time too. And and they don't carry all the water out. They that is that all the groundwater from the town. Every one of these places that needs half that some is because of the flood all the time. So you the other solution would be to go down to the back of the of the brick uh, church. Make that a. A much bigger uh, culvert. That goes under his front lawn and into Bill's. But then you have a problem. You got the house. Right there that uh. Un- under over broke.
Over the past.
Bill Watson House. And Bill Watson House and all that. Because the pipe comes out there just upstream of Bill Watson. Right now, it it carries twenty-four inches, I think, water. Table would carry it, but most of the water doesn't go that way. You know, so that the the solution would be. Would be very expensive. I don't know what it would be.
I think there's been a long term discuss, a long time there's been long term planning about stormwater mitigation from the buildings and I think that that's. Pretty much made clear by this particular problem. And so I think if you were to start new and look at it. It would probably be uh, in the to the town's advantage to not run stormwater. Culverts across private land in any case, whether it goes across my yard or Bill Watson's yard or or anybody else's yard. The town has us access to the stream in in a number of locations. And uh, avoiding, you know, so the town has a right to cross anybody's land and take that and then put it in a culvert. But it also comes with responsibilities that you not do damage to those properties, not put a person's house at risk and. Anyone who looked at it, my house can see that there's not ten feet to the curb, you know, it's like that that damage is is is. A big deal and and I do believe that while you have the right to put that swell in, you also have the responsibility to make sure that my house doesn't fall into the curb. So in the long term, it's to the town's advantage. To keep all these, to take all of those culverts out, get rid of that culvert behind my barn. It's a bad idea from. From a hundred and twenty years ago. Get rid of those. It does sound extremely wrong and do storm drain down Main Street, but that may be a long term goal, you know, it could. And I'm not asking for this to be done tomorrow. But man, you should keep all that on town property and then these top, these questions will never come up again. You'll never be hearing from me or from Bill Watson or anybody else. I know the other one did. You know, I think Denise Martin's. Situation with the a pipe that runs down there is not undisputed. And so it's running across there. My pipe just runs across my sister's yard as well, by the way. So it's. You know, take those. This the issue of the storm drain and have a big long term plan that needs to be fixed in town and and you know, it might take further. I I didn't do it, but I mean, it's pretty clear that that's what we're trying to do. That's fine. And so and and so in terms of this particular case, yes, I'm I'm very sensitive when I hear people in town saying, why are we being something on their mind? And I say, obsession. You know, and I think it's me. See why I'm asking for charity. So it's embarrassing and it is a disgrace. I'm not asking for charity. You guys, you guys, the town had had a right to take that. That uh, put that culvert in, that swell there on. But yeah, you also have the responsibility to make sure that my that I didn't have to come up with forty thousand dollars to repair my yard. And then. In two thousand and four, when Meredith Goethen stole on the property. Uh, she threw me in higher lawyer. To say to you, look, we're putting you on notice. You know, if damage occurs in the future, we're gonna hold you responsible. And that's where we're at here. Although. I do need to have an ask for to make sure that it's clear to you all that I'm not getting litigious about this. Regardless of fact that all those lawyers and lawyers are sitting in the file, that doesn't. I'm calling, I want you to say it. Tell them to accept well, or answer to the court. That's not gonna happen again. But man, you really do have a responsibility on there.
No, I agree. The wall, the walls. I'm looking at the statute here, pretty clear. And. Damage occurs to first-hand property varies from the insufficiency of a wall, of repair, a bridge, or culvert. The town is liable to keep in repair the person who's standing, the image they recovered in civil action.
No, I agree. I agree with that. I think the town's responsibility is. So it's in in the context of the public grant, man, not 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 of not just the vanity. I mean, nothing has to be done because of. Of the danger to my house. Don't forget that I think the town applied. On for twelve or more different pieces of the property and only two were recognized by that grant agency as like actually threatening someone's house of life. And so I'm one of those two. So that was God had done. The more complex issue of of occurs what goes up by that barn. Is uh, you know, this idea that, yeah, what happens, you know, if we just put money into it, is it gonna happen again right away? And you're absolutely right about that. And so that might take a bigger look. I mean, I lived with this miserable yard for for years. I don't know if Dottie shares my feelings about that. I mean, I've got a lot of. Dunkiness in my life. And so I'm not trying to impress anybody by showing off my beautiful grass in the yard. And if it has to stay like that for another five years while you guys figure it out and the money somehow comes down from above. So be it. I can live with a crappy yard for five more years. Whatever. What I do want you to take responsibility for doing.
Well, I don't think you can leave it that way because. You do have another, you do have another incident. With the erosion that occurred, it only works. And and at that point in time, it might not be, it could be five perhaps.
And that's right.
There's a question about.
And the barn, I've I've been threatened on all of it, rightfully that because of that swell. So yeah, is there anything I can do to better?
I thought they're interested in that. My personal feeling is that the town should go ahead and fix it. They should pay for the whole cost and then they we should go into a um. A an engineer and figure out how to correct the problem. Whether it's whether we can get grants for it or whether it could be over here. I I don't know. But I I really think that's just my opinion.
So can we make a motion? Can I make a motion?
Okay, I can make it. Well, yeah, I know. I think I'm watching that that the town. Uh, pay the. Well. What is the act, what is the actual situation that the 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 state is paying for good work, you know, but. And the towns being paid for should be paid for by the town after we were to be there.
They're paying twenty-two and you're paying seven-two, something like that.
I don't even want to think. Yeah, that's one great.
Okay, so make a motion that we that that the town. Spending the seven thousand, whatever it is, to complete the project.
To 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 make. Problem is clear that you will you will be responsible. For the match that is required for the N R C S, E W P, whatever the number is, project. Uh, for on Hinkley Brook.
Okay.
And you will meet the match. And then that'll cover it. Good. If you wanna play with numbers, you you have one to be out of numbers.
And we think it's around seventy.
Two hundred, I think.
And then and then town then will will enter into a. Construction where engineers can can see how can they mitigate. The upper portion of it. So that it doesn't, so what we're doing doesn't happen yet. But I think it's important that. That it just if you just don't fix this, I think you have to look. To see what the long-term condition is. You know, that that would be my motion. Do we have any other construction? You guys, would you like to do all the culvert down Main Street?
No, I know it's in Main Street. I'm a part of Main Street.
It's a no, they're no one special.
You want very nor just know where they are.
All of them say aye? Aye, both? You move there?
Yeah.
Alright, okay, done. Alright, Patrick. So Phil, you know, I guess one will take care of the what we have to do to get it fixed or whatever they have to do.
We have a meeting with them on Thursday.
Okay, great. So let's move on. We have a highway and so we have before I take over. We have uh. Three exit exit reports. The Denver Company, we have a um. P N G and a. American.
American.
American, Amer- Amer- AmeriGas. Okay, so so we make a motion to accept those and have Morgan sign it.
Certainly.
All of them say aye?
Aye.
All of them, okay, go ahead, buddy.
We graded back together that Friday. I called patients this morning and said by the end of the week, they come back there as well. Um. Everything else is have been back together. So we're grading roads. We'll get back to picking up the debris around town. So this uh, towards the end of the week. And uh, hopefully next week we can maybe jump over to Anderson Road and start working on some of that property. Some groundwork. And we met with uh, Indian Regional Def Newt. Um. I don't know if I think what day that was.
Thursday.
Thursday last week. And went over um, our tablet and more of the uh. G I A. Work that we're gonna start in the Kobe into that. We have another meeting with them. Hopefully Morgan will be available that time. So we can get her involved. Um, so we're getting everybody on on board and this time we're going. That's pretty much it.
Tell me what the payday is.
Um, I've been working one up for uh.
Okay, good.
The uh, I just gotta get together with Morgan this week and. So we can write it up, get it out. And want to advertise it.
Anybody have any questions in mind? Those were good. You're getting there.
It's not snow on. I'm good.
Um. Morgan, you wanna do um?
Yeah, I can talk on the ARPA funds. So the town received. Uh, two hundred and one and. Seven hundred eighty-four. Um, thousand dollars in ARPA funds initially. And then was awarded awarded an additional eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. Uh, because some towns declined the funds, so then that got. Disversed to the others. So we ended up getting two hundred and two. Thousand dollars. So we just need a motion saying that we're accepting that eight hundred and we're putting that towards the town hall. Maybe a project.
We what about the one you say?
We got, yeah, we got that set.
So we're all set.
So that's all set, yeah.
Good.
Been a month.
Yeah. Yeah.
We need a motion to accept the individual.
Yeah.
I'm I'm gonna pick the subject. So I don't get it all.
That's it for.
Your second, John seconded. All of them say aye? Aye, opposed? I think anybody wants to give way one? Alright, it was okay.
Something's.
Um. Well, there there's no committee reports, but we'll go into executive session for that. Um, other visits? If there's no other business, any public comment? There's no public comment? Uh, somebody make a motion to take it into executive session for personnel hiring? You say? I have Morgan going in at the legitimate finals. The executive. Thank you for coming, everybody.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV. Keeping government honest.